I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. I'll rise for the flag salute.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. Next is roll call.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Present.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
And Councilmember Murray asked to be excused.
Move to excuse Councilmember Murray.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Councilmember Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? She is excused. Okay, so next is late changes to the agenda. Do we have any?
No late changes, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is general public comment.
No one signed up to provide public comment, either online or in person, and any written comments were submitted to council.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our number four, which is consent agenda. Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent agenda items A through E.
I'll second it, but I just have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
For number C, I thought we were going to, did we receive information that Councilman Murray had requested?
Okay.
And she was okay with that? Anyone?
Yes, I think.
I had, thank you, Mayor, I had asked if the information, the comparables that were provided for city attorney services were sufficient to place the item on the consent agenda, and received no objection. So, happy to talk about it if you like, but the comparables, I think, were pretty favorable to us.
All right, thank you. So, it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is the review and public hearing on the ordinance adopting franchise agreement with Puget Sound Energy, and that will be with our Public Works Director Gary Shimick, and he is online here. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. I apologize for being online today. I'm a little under the weather and I didn't want to spread it around.
Thank you.
You are welcome. So, here with one of our legal counsel, Lisa Marshall. Thank you, Lisa. Been great to work with, really appreciate it. We're here to, for a review of the Puget Sound Energy ordinance and franchise agreement. In your packet is staff report, the 1982 original agreement, the draft ordinance, and the draft franchise agreement. And the council goal represented here is responsible governments to ensure desired level of service. As I briefly mentioned, city council approved the original agreement with PSC on September 20th, 1982. That franchise agreement and this franchise agreement really allows PSC to conduct their work within, within the city right way or the franchise area. And the original agreement, like this one, has a 25-year term. This agreement is a little bit different, that then offers the option for two five-year extensions. And we're really, what we're really doing, again, since it's been since 1982, is coming to you with new adopted standards and best practices. For example, one thing that is now up to date is identification and insurance, again, with consistent with, with our terms and others like us. And again, this franchise then allows PSC to conduct their business, which is really, you know, point specifically, the transmission, distribution, and sale of gas for either power, heat, light, and other such purposes for which gas may be used. And then, one, just one area that I think, well, one of the most significant parts is relocation of facilities, and I just wanted to touch on that briefly, because this is something we'll be coming to you, again, with other, other agencies such as Snohomish PUD. In the case of a city project, a city-sponsored project that requires the relocation of facilities by PSC, per this agreement, they will be required to fund that relocation. Of course, we'll be working with them closely to try to minimize any, you know, cost as reasonable. And then, in the case of a private development project, which requires a relocation of facilities, in that case, the private development would be paying for, for that relocation. And again, same type of idea, you know, parties would work together and we would be included in that to try to minimize the work required. So with that, want to just open it up and see if you had any questions for Lisa or myself.
All right, does anyone have any questions? Wow. You did that good a job.
You're just taking it easy on me because I'm not doing well.
And we're not doing a public hearing tonight. Oh, we have a hand up with Councilmember Woodard. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, just real quick, because of the new addition of the potential two, five additional sets of years, who initiates that, or is that just a mutuality? You both agree that's what it is? Or can someone decline without giving reasons? Like, what's the kind of framework around that?
Yeah, in this case, and Lisa, back me up if I'm wrong, I know I got it right in front of me, but I just, just read it, again, this afternoon. PSC needs to request that, and there is a certain timeframe that, within that, it must be asked for. I think it actually is, it has to wait until about a, I believe it's 180 days before the expiration.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Sonmore.
I just want to ask, are there any high-level things that we should be aware of? I know it's been 25 years, so I know a lot has changed in 25 years, and we've grown a lot in 25 years. Are there certain things that the council should know about that have changed drastically that would impact costs to cities?
Not, not by my read, Lisa, I'll ask you, the one thing that I, why I pointed to that was the relocation. I think that was really important, and I, I, I read the original one, again, just before council, and I didn't see that called out as clearly, but, but that to one is the most important one to me, is how, how the relocation goes, because that's, of course, could be very substantial costs. Lisa, was there anything that grabbed your attention between the 82 and this one?
No, but having the old one be so old, certainly there are updates to the law. I know that some of the terms and conditions that were historically included in franchises are now in the state laws, such as relocation after a certain amount of time. So I think what you're seeing, other than just simply the passage of time, are some laws, codes, regulations updated, but substantively, there's very little change over the past four decades in how we've been doing business with them.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone sign up for comments?
No one signed up to provide public testimony in person or online, or written.
And no one here has, wants to talk or sign up. Just want to make sure. Okay, Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to close the public hearing.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed, and now, Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the ordinance with Puget Sound Energy.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve this? All in favor? Do we have any questions before?
Sorry, Mayor, for franchise agreements, we need to have two readings. We just held the public hearing at the first one. It's scheduled for your agenda on November 20th. It's not on consent, but state law, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, requires two public readings for any franchise agreements.
Okay, so I saw that, that's why I was wondering if we're...
Yeah, it's a little bit odd, but...
I take my eye back.
But just wanted to call that out before any final votes. We do have to have the second one, and that's scheduled for the 20th.
All right, so we will... Do we have to un...
No, I, I think at this point, if council just acknowledges that it will move to a second reading on November 20th, then we'll be fine.
All right, so we'll just wait until the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so next is the review of the draft, of the review, draft, final of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Strategic Plan, with our deputy city manager, Carolyn Hope.
All right, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, city council members and community. I'm Carolyn Hope, the deputy city manager, and I'm joined by our vice chair, Teresa Courtney, and our commissioner, Kermit Apio, from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission. We are here tonight to share a revision of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Strategic Plan, which we've titled, Together We Thrive: A Strategic Plan for Advancing Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And this revision is after we asked for some public comment on the previous draft. There we go. Our mouse is a little slow today. So tonight, we will go through the public comment process and what we heard from the community, and then we'll talk about some changes that we made to the plan as a result of hearing from the community. Real high level, we'll go through the council goals, legislative history, acknowledge folks who worked on the plan, talk about the purpose of the plan, those public comments and the changes to the plan, and next steps. And definitely have time for questions and answers. This plan aligns well with the council goals about growing our vibrant community, having an informed and engaged community, and responsible government, and it is in alignment with the mission of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission, which is there for you. In summary, to celebrate and promote diverse, equitable, and inclusive culture within our community, eliminate any form of actual or perceived discrimination, and to help community members from all backgrounds learn, grow, and thrive. We've been here over the years, a couple of times, to get your approval on this work. Council allocated funding to prepare a strategic plan, has directed the commission to work with staff to work on that plan and do some community engagement around that plan, and we were here in September with that draft plan. So tonight, we're back with a revision for you. We definitely want to acknowledge all of the people who have been involved in this plan, which started when the commission was formed in 2020. One of you is now on the city council, several former commissioners are in the audience. Thank you for your support and all the work that you've done, and definitely this commission, including Teresa and Kermit, have been super helpful in our outreach process and working with the staff and our recommendations as we've prepared the plan over time. So thank, thanks to everyone. And we also had two consulting firms support this work, the VITA Agency and Equity Through So this plan identifies actions that the city can take to ensure that all community members have equitable access to city services, and they feel welcome included in the community. Again, that is in alignment with the city council's goals and the commission's goals in our strategic plan. City staff, one of the other goals of this plan is to ensure that city staff work in a culture of inclusivity and are prepared to work with our diverse community members. And that goal came as a result of a lot of work we did in asking staff about their concerns working here, or their concerns with diversity, or their ideas with diversity, equity, and inclusion, and their experience working with our community. And again, we have some highlights from the city council's goals for diversity, equity, and inclusion on the screen. All right, again, just wanted to highlight some of the commission's powers and duties which are in alignment with this plan. This is straight from the code where council gave the commission these, these duties. One is to provide information, education, and communication that facilitates an understanding of each other, our diverse, our diverse community, and to celebrate and respect individual differences. We also want to promote programs and provide guidance to ensure an accessible, safe, and welcoming, and inclusive government and community, and to support, challenge, and guide government and the community to eliminate all forms of discrimination. So that is the introduction, and I'm going to hand it over to Commissioner Courtney, who's going to talk about the public comment period.
Thanks, Carolyn. As she said, I'm going to talk about how we gathered the comments from the public on the plan and who the respondents represented. There was an online poll available between September 13th and October 33rd in English and Spanish. The entire plan was available on the city's website, and the introduction and recommendation chapters were translated into Spanish. The poll allowed for open-ended comments and direct responses to the recommendations to improve community access to city government. Engagement period was promoted with a video that was also translated into Spanish. The public comment period was marketed through a news release, subsequent article in the MLT News, the city's social media platforms, posters, flyers, and at the city's booth at Welcoming Week, announced at city council meetings and community conversation, and shared with a city email list of nearly 400 people in both English and Spanish. As a reminder, this is not a statistically valid, randomly sampled survey. The online poll had 65 responses. One person answered the Spanish-language online poll, one response was emailed to the city, and two responses were gathered on a poster at Welcoming Week. The respondents self-identified as 63% female, 18% male, 3% non-binary, and 8% preferred not to respond with a preference or disclose. The respondents by race were 54.4% white, 14% Asian or Asian-American, 7% Hispanic or Latino, 3.5% American Indian or Alaska Native, 1.8% Black or African-American, 7% Other, 0% Hawaiian or Other Pacific Islander, and 22.8% preferred not to disclose. Proportional to the population, there were more respondents who were white and Asian or Asian-American, and less that represented the Hispanic or Latino community. As to country of birth, 89.6% were born in the United States, 3.4% in Germany, 1.7% in the Philippines, 10.1% preferred not to disclose, and 5.1% Other. Language spoken at home, 50% English, 10.5% preferred not to disclose, 8.8% Other, 7% Spanish, 1.75% Chinese, and 1.75% Russian. This data is interesting because often people think of folks who speak other languages as immigrants, and here we can see that 80% of the respondents were born in the United States, and other 63% of them said they speak English at home. And now we're going to turn it over to Commissioner Apio.
Thank you, Commissioner Courtney. As, as Commissioner Courtney mentioned, the poll presented the recommendations to improve community access to city government, and several opportunities to make general comments about these recommendations or other elements of the plan. The chart shows respondents' opinions about each of the recommendations as agree, disagree, or no opinion or unsure. Of the 20 recommendations to improve community access to city government, the community was more than 50% in favor of 18 of the 20. Two of the, of the recommendations that had support of 43 to 46%, those were, number one, host conversations and training about diversity, equity, and inclusion topics, and number two, provide gender-neutral restrooms in all city buildings. In a few minutes, Carolyn will explain how we addressed concerns with these recommendations, but, pretty good, 18 out of 20, got over 50%. So, to the specific concerns, Carolyn will cover the key changes made in addressing these comments. The major themes are summarized here and responses are provided. There was a concern that seniors were not represented in the plan, however they are, along with all other protected classes of people by race, color, religion, sex, including transgender status, sexual orientation, and pregnancy, national origin, age, 40 and older, and disability. There are concerns about converting restrooms to gender-neutral, mostly with costs. Gender-neutral bathrooms are not required by the state, but they do help provide safety for people who are gender-neutral, transgender, or otherwise wish to have a private restroom. Parents with children could also use these restrooms more easily if they are a single user. This is intended to be implemented as renovations or new construction occurs, and there are opportunities to make such accommodations. While Washington state law does not require all gender-neutral bathrooms, it does prohibit discrimination based on gender identity. Next, there have been different thoughts about ancestral acknowledgements, and two indigenous people responded to the survey with slightly different opinions. We, the DEI Commission, have been meeting with local indigenous families about how the city can support them, improve our relationship, learn from them, and honor them appropriately and with respect. On the next one, Carolyn will address this with more details, but there was a concern about being inclusive of people with trauma. We believe this is very important and addressed in this community engagement plan. Essentially, people experience various types of trauma. This could be from fear of government, having experienced violence, trauma as a result of an accident or abuse, et cetera. We do need to include people with trauma in conversations, provide welcoming environments, be patient with their needs, listen, and acknowledge. Trainings are planned in the, in the next year, and it is important to build trust with individuals with trauma. Next, there are some comments that we cannot prioritize one group over another, which is absolutely not the intent of any diversity, equity, or inclusion program, and inclusion program. Equity means people should be treated uniquely to compensate for their different circumstances. Inclusion is the proactive removal of barriers that hinder full participation and success. In fact, there are many state and federal laws that require governments to be equitable. We, as a commission, exist to ensure that one group is not prioritized over others. Some people want to ensure that people with physical and neurological disabilities are accounted for in this plan. They certainly are. As mentioned earlier, this plan covers all protected classes, and again, federal and state laws require us to provide accommodations for various types of disabilities. And, and last there, there were some folks who mentioned term limits for commissions, boards, or council members. This is merely a recommendation to city council, and obviously, it's in the city council's purview to change this or keep it as is. The recommendation came from people in the community who felt that having some kind of term limits would allow more people to serve and gain experience learning about government and giving back to the community. This provides an opportunity for people with new or different perspectives to participate, and newer residents to volunteer. Again, this is just a recommendation, but the DEI Commission thought it was in line with being a more inclusive community and city government.
Thank you both. I appreciate your contributions and being here tonight. I'm going to take on the action plan, and we're just going to walk through the changes that we made. So I'm going to show you red lines of the changes, so you can see clearly what we did. So the first change was to PP4, this was part of the personnel policy changes. There was some concern in some of the comments that we were trying to reach quotas by changing our recruiting efforts. That is not the case, and that is illegal. Basically, we were just trying to market recruiting to a broader set of people, which is always a good idea. There's people in all different fields, all different backgrounds, who could be great public servants, and so, really, this is about making sure that we market differently and that we're encouraging folks from different places to apply for jobs here. The next one is addressing the issue we just talked about, people with trauma, how we, how we work with folks in the community who are dealing with trauma. Again, this was addressed in the community engagement plan, and we added a statement here that it's important for staff to understand how to design engagement opportunities for people who have experienced trauma. So, how we create a welcoming environment...
Great question here. How do you do that? I have never heard the trauma piece put into it before. Most people with trauma don't really want to let you know about their trauma, or because it's traumatic, but I, I'm just curious, how do you...
Sure. I mean, if we think about immigrants as one example, this is people who may have bad experiences with government, who are afraid of government. We could host conversations or meetings in places that aren't city buildings. We could have them in the community, we could have them with people, even, they could be invited by a friend or a leader in the community who they have trust with, and that they are cooperating with staff or the council or commissioners to host a conversation, to learn about something that's impacting their community or their neighborhood.
Because I was looking at, you know, how we treat trauma victims and, and how we respond to it, so I was hoping there'd be education on how we not cause trauma to people who have been through trauma.
Right.
And so that was, I was thinking more on a broader term of, you know, we don't shame our victims, you know?
Sure.
We, we treat them, you know, with up due respect. I was just reading our police report, and there was quite a few domestic violence, and that's the first thing that came in my head, is a victim, because I'd just done reading that, so that was interesting.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, and I think that, so, part of it is creating a welcoming space, right? And then, part of it is if you're in conversation and someone reveals something to you about their trauma, or it triggers trauma for them, like, not pushing them out the door, right? This is, we're, we're trying to reach people, help people, and connect them with what they need. So, I think it's important just to treat folks with respect in those situations. And so we'll be providing tools to staff and people doing community engagement, like our commissioners and our new community ambassadors, just so that they have some general skills. I mean, no one here is going to be a mental health professional, but we're here to just learn how to listen and encourage the conversation.
If I could, you also mentioned people with, I want to make sure I use the term correctly, who've been through a different type of trauma. That was interesting to me as well, and how do you, how would you recognize, I'm sorry, where did it go? With physical trauma, and that's something too, is that, are you looking at, how, how would you address that as well? I know we already went past it, but...
I think sometimes we're not going to know what people's trauma is. I mean, we're not here to analyze that, but like, just, just to create... welcoming space, people with disabilities, is that, I'm sorry, is that what you said?
Oh, no, yeah. My example is, I had my mom in a wheelchair down at Ballenger Park, and we're talking about people with disabilities, and I couldn't get her over the gravel. And everyone just looked at me, you know, and I'd like to say, you know, it would be nice to fix the pavement, and we shouldn't have rocks here, because I can't get her wheelchair over the rocks. And I think sometimes it's all a matter of, you know, teaching people about compassion and offering to help, and so, that's kind of what I was looking for, is sometimes it's a mindset and teaching people a little bit about, we appreciate that help when we're helping somebody with physical disabilities, and understanding what their limitations are going over gravel and different things.
We have another person, councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say I really appreciate the conversation. And you all laid it out there. I would just say, trauma-informed care is a curriculum we actually refer to in Human Services that is addressing a lot of what you were just asking, and then having a wonderful conversation. Our agencies actually are, for lack of a better word, certified as trauma-informed agencies. And it's a lot, again, what we're talking about without going too far into it, but if you wanted to look into it, I would say, that's the kind of, the discipline you want to look for. Trauma-informed care, at least, again, that's what it's called in Human Services.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, and this is the recommendation about term limits. Again, we just modified the language to make it clear, this is a recommendation. Just consider revising the city code. We made that change. And again, in the action plan, it says this is for council to discuss, or not. And performance measure, if it's implemented, we'll look at like what the impact is. So, happy to have a discussion about that if there's more concern. Or we can wait until the end.
Looking, but. Go ahead, councilmember Page.
So, when, as this came up, what sort of term limits was being tossed around as far as?
I am not aware of any numbers that were discussed, but we can certainly, if it's something that you want to discuss, we can bring you data from other cities.
Well, I guess, well, I'm talking, I'm kind of talking about how this came up. So, I guess the question I would ask is, how did it come up? Okay? And the reason why I ask that, because I'm sure that as it came up, then numbers were talked about. And I'm just, you know, what, you know, do the 65 people who, you know, brought, who had some kind of conversation with this, you know, just kind of like, what was the thinking pattern like?
I believe one of the comments was in a survey from a while back, so, a written comment, and I don't have any details from that one. And I know that it came up in a conversation, but I wasn't personally involved in that conversation. So, again, I don't have numbers to share with you. But I think it doesn't necessarily have to be one term, you know? There could be two terms, and then maybe there's an option to go to a different commission or come back again in the future. There's different ways, different cities do it. Happy to bring you more information on that.
Okay.
Okay. We'll go to the other comments. Happy to bring this, come back to this one later if you'd like. So, the changes we made to the recommendation about gender-neutral restrooms was to be as clear as we could that this is, provide gender-neutral restrooms in all city buildings as remodels are planned, new buildings are designed, and funding is available. And in the action plan, we note that some changes are easier to make than others. We made a change here in City Hall not that long ago to a single restroom to change them from male and female to gender-neutral. It actually helps get the flow of people through the restrooms faster. Never mind all the other issues and reasons why you would do that. So, again, this is something that would be carefully looked at and is not an easy fix, and we acknowledge that, especially in buildings where we have locker rooms, and they're older buildings. We're not going to, we're not going to put this on the CIP as its own project. This is something that will come up when we're doing a major remodel or if there's a simple fix. Recruiting more bilingual staff, particularly in customer service roles. We ended up making a change to that based on some recommendations from our human resources manager and a group of folks that are reviewing our personnel policies. So, we will revisit the pay incentive, but there were some concerns about how often the person might use their language at work and how big the pay incentive is, so.
Go ahead, councilmember Salma.
Also, with the school district, you have to pass a test.
Yes.
I can't remember what it's called, but do we do that currently?
For the police department, yes. And so, right now, we don't have this program in place for all the other staff, but in the police department, where we do have this system, they do have to pass a test. So, we'll continue looking at that as the need might arise, but I think we have to do a little more evaluation of how often certain people would be using the other language and what that pay incentive might look like.
Can I ask one? Can we get a copy of our employee policies, our hiring practices?
Yeah, the current ones. Sure.
All right. Any other hands? Go ahead.
Okay. The next one. We had some comments in the public comment period that people didn't agree with or understand why we focused so much on translation and interpretation, and some people felt like everyone should speak English. I think it's important to note that this is a federal law that we must comply with, called Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. And we just, as part of the community engagement plan, shared with you our language access plan, which highlighted all the different languages that are spoken here in Mount Lake Terrace, and that Spanish was the closest to meeting this federal requirement. And so, we are being very deliberate and thoughtful about when we translate certain materials into Spanish and how we include people in different parts of our work. So, again, this is covered in our community engagement plan and the language access plan, but we wanted to make it clear that we do have requirements to adhere to.
Do you have another question?
Opportunity to ask questions, right? So, I'm using my curiosity here. How much does it cost on top of, so I'm very budget-oriented? How much does it cost to translate everything? And now, with AI coming out there and all these special tools, I'm assuming the cost is coming way down, or how much? Is it because you said it's mandated by the state? How, what exactly is mandated? I'm sure it's not, is it like 10 languages, or are they saying everything? Or can you explain that?
Yeah. So, I can resend you the language access plan if you'd like. It's short, but we went through that with you earlier this year. There's a protocol, there's some calculations that are required for us to follow, and we have to evaluate how many people in our community speak another language that's their primary language. And if you are close to 5%, that is a language. If 5% or above, you're required to translate, and we're very close. And then, there's some other recommendations. So, we're at like 4. something percent for Spanish. So, if we know, for example, at the front desk, yes, we see people who are Spanish-speaking, and we're seeing a lot of people coming to the front desk who speak another language, say Chinese. And that's becoming like challenging for customer service staff, then we might decide we're going to translate this form, both in Spanish and to Chinese, because we see a need there. It doesn't mean we have to translate all our materials in all sorts of different languages. It gives, the language access plan is great because it really focuses us on where, which languages are the most prevalent here. And that is based on people who have limited English proficiency. It's not just that they speak two languages. And so, I think that's helping us a lot in figuring out how to focus our spending. And to your point about cost, we do have translation and interpretation services. Interpretation is definitely more expensive than translation, but, you know, you have a live person attending a meeting or something with folks. We are trying to build out our projects and our plans in the future with those costs built in, so that we're not surprising, like, the communications department with these costs in the future.
I have a friend that does translation, and she does it for medical, and she's just on standby on the phone constantly. And so, I'm just wondering, like, if I spoke a different language and I went up to the counter, how would I even know what to ask? And so, I'm just talking about the dialogue. Is there any tools?
Yes.
That you can immediately, like, if they're asking a question, and you don't want to be rude, but you want to understand what they're asking, how, is there a tool that you can kind of?
We have a phone service through one of the translation and interpretation companies.
There's nothing immediately that you could do on the computer to?
Well, certainly, people might have access to Google Translate or something like that, but we do have this phone number that we can call anytime, right at the front desk, and put them on conference call speakerphone. And if we can't figure out what language they're speaking, this service can help us with that, and then they can get a translator who speaks that language, so that we can have a conversation right at the front counter together.
And so, going back to the budget, how much are we looking at for, like? I don't even know what they charge us for translation and how often we do it. I'm just curious.
It's, I don't have a total number for you. The, when you're getting words translated, it's by the word.
It's by the word?
Yeah. And it's, if you, so, if it's something simple that we've had translated before, sometimes staff will rely on Google Translate or a tool like that. However, it is not always correct, and we have gotten negative feedback from community members that it has taken words that are just not standardly used in that way, because you have to be cognizant of, not all words translate, right? And sometimes they have different meanings. So, when we're doing something, we don't want to be mistaken, I mean, which is almost everything, but our first choice is to get it professionally translated. If we have to use tools because it's a rush or something like that, we try to use multiple tools online to make sure that we're double and cross-checking.
And I'm just curious, because I can see for medical, maybe by word, but I just thought, well, maybe they do it like by every 10 minutes or something, and we have a contract for like 150 minutes or something.
Yeah, for translation, it's by word, for interpretation, it's by hour.
Councilmember Page.
Thank you. The, so, and I see that, you know, the CA is, you know, for bilingual, as we're just talking about, more folks working with, that are bilingual. And the CA 15 is regarding city contracts, you know, using marketing to get more, or at least access to, for people to, a diverse group to perhaps get business, you know, have access to some of the contracts that come out. But what I don't see here is a plan or a recommendation for human resources to have a stronger, more, a stronger plan to ensure that when they are looking for employees here to work at the city, in the city functions as jobs come up, to ensure that, that various groups who would not look at your traditional locations for jobs because of their, you know, ethnicity, to ensure that they have at least access to the information that there are these jobs available, you know? And I think that that's something that should be there, because as jobs come up, if we don't have, or maybe we do, maybe you can tell me that we do have, as a city, a very good group that does, you know, that puts out information for, you know, upcoming jobs, that, and they can demonstrate that the various groups, you know, within our area, whether it's in our city or within our area, that are non-traditional, have had access to at least see that these jobs are available on their own engines.
Yes, that is the goal for both PP4 and the one about contracts that we just left a second ago. So, when I talk about marketing, it's, I'm sorry, that's maybe a bureaucratic word or unfamiliar word, but we're really talking about just what you're saying. So, what are the professional groups? What are the search, job search engines people are using who don't already work for government, who maybe represent different ethnic backgrounds, who, you know, have a different cultural identity? So, these are things that we're looking at. One of the great things about Mount Lake Terrace News, actually, is that they have a Spanish-speaking reporter who we can work with directly on local things. But if we're trying to reach a broader net, regionally or statewide, there are other assets, news assets and job board assets that we can have access to. So, that is the goal for both the hiring and the contracting recommendations. It's just to come up with a better list that casts the net further and wider. So, we were just getting to this one, and this was, this one is about city contracts. And so, as you may know, a lot of our contracts require competition, pretty much anything over $25,000 for professional services. It's a little higher for capital projects, but we have a process we go through for a request for proposals or bidding. And so, if we want to make sure that we're reaching others, we often use a roster, and we encourage people all the time to join the roster that we're partnered with. But there are other places we can post jobs and advertise. And often, there are search engines that use even our own website to mine information and share it outside. But I think it's important for us to understand where people are looking for contract opportunities, and similar to the recruitment part, come up with a list of websites and other means that we can advertise our work.
Are we still on that one?
Salma?
Yes, that one. My curiosity.
Do you need a new mic? You could grab the one from councilmember Woodard.
I'm just curious. It hasn't been that long ago, thank you, that we put in place the women and minority-owned businesses. Can you tell us a little bit, because it's in Washington state law that we have to do that? Can you kind of explain how that's done?
Sure. For capital projects, I might get the numbers slightly wrong, but the, I think if it's over a million or $2 million for a non-transportation project, that's what the bid amount is worth. There are some criteria for the state that we have to meet. So, they'll give us some criteria for how many subs have to, or the prime has, you know, a certain percentage of the hours of the project would have to be for a WMB. And then, for transportation projects, there's a different threshold instead of criteria.
So, because I was under the impression it did, you know, when they submit forms to bid on a job, they got a certain criteria? Is that what you're talking about, on the, like, the scale rating?
On the bid sheet, yeah. So, we would, if we're doing a job like that where we know we are in that threshold, the bid form will show for, like, how they're going to meet this criteria, and they'll have to show us which subs or which employees meet this criteria.
Oh, so, it's, I was thinking it was just like the business, but it's actually the employees that also are in there as well?
Well, it's the business, you're right, yeah. You're right.
But that could be subcontractors?
They can be subcontractors, yes.
Anyone else?
Okay. Our next recommendation is?
Oh, you had. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just came to me. On contracts for the city, it was, we'd get bids for something like a building or whatever, and I thought. And I thought it was a state law that we had to take the lowest bid. Is that correct, you know?
It is true, and there are some criteria, they're very limited, that we can look at. Like, we, LNI has a database that we can look at to make sure that they haven't been disbarred, that they've paid their subs, you know, they don't have any claims outstanding, things like that. There are also ways to add some very limited criteria to your bid package if you're looking for a specialty kind of service. But it is very limited and usually it goes to the, I mean, low bidder is the primary thing that we have to look at, the cost.
So by state law then?
Yes.
We have to pick the lowest bidder?
Yes.
So it's by money?
Yes.
On who gets the job?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
For capital projects. And just to be clear, yeah, for professional services, it's different.
Councilmember Salmor?
My question, one of them, is if we already have to do that, why are we identifying a group and meet with them to develop a plan of action by December 26? Oh, I'm sorry, I already jumped down into the next one. I'm sorry. Now, now makes sense.
You were still on CA 15.
Okay. So for the next recommendation, which was about co-creating ancestral land acknowledgements with our indigenous communities, we, since we wrote this originally, we, as Commissioner Pio mentioned, we've been meeting with our indigenous community members a couple of times. And also we got some comments on the, during the public engagement on this plan, that an ancestral land acknowledgement isn't always the best way to partner with our indigenous communities. And so we're going to continue that conversation with the folks that we've been meeting with and hopefully broaden that group out as well to find out what the most meaningful way is that we can partner with them to acknowledge their history, their contributions to our community and their culture.
Councilmember Salmor?
Curious about two. We have so many tribes and we have a lot of tribes that are unrecognized. So I don't know much about it, but I know we've got tribes on, a whole bunch of tribes on our islands. How, how do you know which tribes to work with? Because I know, you know, we've got Tuleup and we've got some other tribes and some are different to work with than others. So how, how do you, like, make it fair?
Yeah.
On, on how to know who to work with?
Yeah, really great question. Right now, we, we started our relationships with the Edmonds School District parent indigenous community and the student group, who you met during Every Child Matters Day, some of those folks. We, we need to take more steps to meet with official tribes. But the parent group that we met with originally, there were eight or 10 of them who came. And it was rather interesting because a lot of times we focus on, or you see cities focus on the local tribe, which is great, which we should do. And they acknowledged that a lot of them were transplants or they're, you know, maybe they grew up here, but their, their ancestors came from Alaska or Minnesota or New England or, you know, but they're tribal members. And so to them, their point was, there's a lot of great native and indigenous cultures that we should celebrate and, but we're all not from here. So we're not all Snohomish or we're not all Tuleup or muckle shooter, whomever, right? So I think it's important that we celebrate all the cultures, but I think there's a lot more work for us to do to learn, so. Okay. Our next recommendation, this was one of the recommendations that got less than 50% approval, and I think it originally said host conversations and training about diversity, equity and inclusion topics. I think probably, I didn't see a lot of comments about this one, but I think probably some of the negative reactions were about diversity, equity, inclusion. Like if we're going to go out and do training about diversity, equity and inclusion. This is work that's in the commission's ordinance for them to do education, to help people understand their differences. And so we reworded it a little bit to say host conversations and share information that facilitate a better understanding of diversity and to celebrate and respect the individual differences. So we feel like this language acknowledges what the commission's been doing and we feel like it's been successful. We haven't had a lot of negative reactions to the work that we've been doing to interact with our communities in different ways. So, any questions on that one?
You have another one?
One of the things I always like to be able, is to have an open space to ask questions where people may not know what they don't know. Is that kind of the thing that you're talking about? Or is it to facilitate a better understanding of diversity? So it's, is it an event or is it a meeting or is it education on a website? I'm trying to understand.
Sure.
What it means a little bit more.
I think it's a combination of things. So certainly this, an example could be community conversations, which is the first example you brought up. Like it's a place for people just to come, ask questions, get answers, meet people, learn what government does, tell us their concerns. But certainly, this also could be something that we've been talking about, like showing a film and having a conversation about that film. If it's about like a cultural celebration or issue. We've had speakers, we've had speaker panels like at the Juneteenth and so forth where you're bringing people in to, to listen to some folks and then have a conversation. So it could mean a lot of different things.
Yeah, you brought up something interesting. You said, talk about government. And I think, because I was trying to address the concerns of the negative, and I just thought it would be kind of interesting to throw in, and learn about the government, you know, in there as well to make it, because I was trying to understand, what were the negative comments? Because it's pretty broad.
Is that a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you ask me a question?
Did you say there was negative comments received on this?
I didn't have any specific comments, but the, when people voted disagree or agree, this was one that had about 48% agree.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe it had, I thought you said some negative.
I didn't have a lot of direction on what people disagreed with about it.
Councilmember Page?
The, the other thing that I, I think I want to add to that, this conversation regarding the community conversations or just the community engagement, you know, I'm thinking over the last couple of years, you know, the commission, I think, has done some remarkable work as in that starting point of bringing the community together. And some of, to answer Councilmember Salmor's question regarding just some of the comments, if you will, or the setup, whether is it, is it a meeting, is it a forum or whatever? You know, I, I think back to some of the ones that you've had and, and how you started with a plan, you know, to bring the people together. And that plan included, you know, breaking them up in tables and groups and having a moderator and having a list of questions, but giving them the freedom, you know, to speak to whatever it is that they wanted to speak to. And, and what came out of some of those meetings because of, you know, allowing them to be, you know, whatever it is that they needed to be at those meetings. You know, you asked a question about what was negative about government. But, you know, I remember being in several of those meetings where fear of government was, you know, a phrase that was said a lot. Trusting government, you know, was, and we're not talking about the feds, we're talking about the city. On being comfortable and just coming into city hall, you know, could be viewed as a negative. The fact that we had, you know, our first, this commission had their first community conversations right here in city hall, you know, in this room here with a group that had never, ever been in city hall before. And I know that we talk about, you know, how do we get these different groups to be involved in things? And the fact that we probably, you know, there probably was about 30, you know, folks from the mosque here that, that night, very engaged. And is part of, you know, I think what this is talking about, what we need to do and how successful it can be. But I also would like to say that moving forward with these, with these kind of conversations or meetings or forums, is that, you know, as a city, we find a way to ensure that the mixture of the audience and the participants on the night that those events are happening are diverse. You know, I know we, there, there were targeted groups that we tried to get, but if we want to get the city residents to learn about diversity, equity, inclusion amongst all the various groups, then we got to find a way to get them together, you know, as a, you know, as a mixed group, to have those same kind of conversations that we had, you know, with those singular groups. I know you had one meeting here that probably had about 30, 35 people that had some pretty cool dynamics where the age group was somewhere between 19 and 75. And they were very mixed. And it was probably the most animated meeting that was actually held. And I think it was because of that diversity that was in the room. So that is something that in the plan, you have to really work on building towards. Because the idea is, A, to learn from those groups like you've been doing, to find out what improvements can be made. But B, and I don't know if that's more important, how do those folk groups learn to interact with each other so that the things that are happening in the city that are making people uncomfortable, you know, can begin to become minimized because of that interaction? And then from that interaction comes the voice, you know, the city amongst one another so that we can have, you know, one of those pop-up events that you talk about all the time. And not only are people willing to come and participate, but you don't have folks out there complaining because we're doing it. You know what I mean? So I, I think that's, you know, when I look at this and think about, well, what if and what can be, that's, you know, something that I think that you have to really consider.
Mayor Pedemal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kind of been reserving most of my comments, but I did want to, particularly since you added it in, and I suggested it earlier, was to celebrate diversity. So I appreciate that addition. I almost think that should be a standalone action and goal. And to me, the highlight of the whole plan is to celebrate diversity. But I appreciate you having that in here as an addition. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other hands. Go ahead.
Before I just go on, I just wanted to also mention that I know people, when I'm out in the community, recognize me as being somebody involved at the city that they met at one of those. And having our faces out there and familiar people will also help them be more comfortable with engaging with us. So that's another value of the community conversations. But anyway, on October 27th, our last meeting at the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Commission, we voted to recommend this plan to the City Council for adoption.
Done with your presentation? You, you vote because, oh, you're going to go on to financial impact, right? Okay. Because I'm like, wait a minute. We have a financial.
Thank you. So I just wanted to acknowledge that where this plan does not have a budget ask per se. This is work that we are doing within our current budget resources. And when we do our budget for the next biennium, we hope to have a better understanding of the costs for the things in this plan. So when we talk about interpretation and translation, we have a form in our community engagement plan for staff to use to help them estimate the costs for those kinds of things and to work with our community, communications and community engagement manager to figure that out. We have proposals in here to meet our ADA and our Title VI requirements. Those are, we already have an ADA program. It's in our budget. It's not well-funded, but we do have funding for it. We'll continue to strive towards those goals. There are some recommendations in this plan to continue providing a small budget for the DEI Commission. Our annual budget right now is about $7,500 and that is to do all the community engagement activities. You've seen them work on small events and community conversations and an occasional training like attending the Step Up Conference in Snohomish County, that's offered by Leadership Snohomish County. So those are the kinds of things that we see here. There's not a proposal for like a major consultant to come in and do another plan or to help us implement this. This will be implemented by staff, your commissioners, and with the assistance of our new community ambassadors who are interviewing right now, so. Let me know if you have any other questions.
That's exactly what I wanted to know because I know we put certain ARPA funds for 23 and 24, and I was trying to find in the budget where we had it in for 2025. So 2025 is $7,500 for implementing some of the activities that are put in this plan.
That's our budget for this year that we've been using for the various events that the commission has been hosting. I don't anticipate it will go up that much, but we would just like to continue to request funding in that way.
Request it like here and there or just have, because our budget is not well? And so what I'm really trying to look at is the most vulnerable people in our city and looking at cost. And so that's why when I heard $7,500, I was like, oh, okay. But when you said maybe certain ask here and there?
Oh, no, no, no. No, that, that's our budget for this year and that we will put a budget together for the next biennium and it won't look incredibly different.
Thank you.
All right.
So we are happy to continue the conversation, but pending your discussion tonight, we were recommending that we place this final plan. If you have any changes to it, we'd be happy to make them before the next meeting, but to bring the plan back for adoption on November 20. And happy to have more questions if you have any.
All right. Are there any other questions?
Just so on, on table, it was table six, now it's table seven. That's where it said maintain a budget fund. So would that be a line item budget? It would come out of the general fund, but are you putting in, oops, I just pulled up the wrong one, a budget amount in there?
I'm sorry, you're talking about a table in the plan?
Yeah, sorry. Where did it go? I was reading it earlier today, sorry.
It's a little difficult to find things.
Oh, it was bouncing all around. It was red line for, it was six, now it's table seven. And that's what I was just curious about. Where you put in a dollar amount? But I guess if you, you're already telling us what, so like where would I find it in the budget? So we address that.
Where the DEI Commission budget is? It's embedded in the city manager's budget because that's where I work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This thing isn't working. Do you have a question?
Well, I guess, especially this is going to be a consent agenda item. I, first of all, want to acknowledge all the work that's gone into this and think this is a, a great piece of work overall. I think there are still a few areas that we need to consider potentially tweaking. I mean, for instance, sorry, the, the gender neutral bathrooms was one that did not get support. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't be supporting that and acknowledging that it's something we need to work on. But I think we need to be careful about how we're doing, especially considering all the different factors. I mean, one is, I, people are, some, I, I think having, having, adding a space for gender neutral, for those that are, that want their individual privacy is one thing and can, you know, and for, I mean, I think. that want their individual privacy is one thing, and I mean, I see it all the time where you have, you know, male, female, and then a special room for family or for whatever, and that makes sense, right? But I think going completely gender-neutral for some people would be very, many people would find themselves very uncomfortable going into a bathroom where somebody else is, I think there's some, there's some things we still need to work through on that. So I think being careful and how we word that and what we, how we go about doing that is important. So I think we still need to work on that recommendation a little bit. Another one was the land acknowledgement one, I think was another area that I think we absolutely should be celebrating, you know, the history and the culture from this land, how we go about doing it, and the wording, I think, in that recommendation might need a little tweaking. Another area that I have personally long been opposed to term limits, even when it was an issue back in the 90s. So I would not support that area. I mean, I recognize, and I think we ought to maybe encourage more people to get involved, and so having an action item, talking more about the pro side rather than the displacement side of getting people out, but instead encourage people to get involved, and that's another area where we've had times, and right now, we're very fortunate to have a lot of great people that want to be involved in local government and serve on our boards and commissions, but we've also gone through time periods where we've struggled to find people to get involved. And so if we're limiting out people that are interested, then we might put ourselves in a difficult position at some point. So that's another thing to consider. Anyway, and then getting back to my point, I made, sorry, earlier, is I really think it's important, I mean, I think all of this is important that we're looking at and considering and doing, and the recommendations are great. What I really want to highlight is the celebrating diversity and taking actions to share ideas from different cultures and backgrounds and people, because I think the more we understand each other, the more we better, we work together and able to spend time together and appreciate each other. And there's a lot of amazing things from a lot of different amazing cultures out there that we, I'd love to see us experience more in this community. And so finding those opportunities to share the different cultures and ideas and backgrounds, I think, is what we really want to be focusing on because I think the more we do that, the more we solve a lot of our other problems.
I was just going to add to that, too. You should take credit for the ambassador volunteer program that went along with what you said because that's another way to get people involved. My favorite way to get involved with diversity courses through children because you can't just, you cannot help but love a children. I'm looking at their photos that you put in here, and they are our future, and so, yeah, you guys did good.
Okay, councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. It sounds like we are coming to a natural land the plane, so I wanted to make sure I jump in and just apologize for not being able to be there to tell you this in person, but I see you all in real time, so I know you already know what I'm about to say. That stated, I just want to say thank you. In an unrelated yet overlapping process, we've been looking at, hey, how do we step in as liaisons, which drew us back to your origin, if you will, if we kind of go with timelines and superheroes, because I'm really kind of positioning you all as that. We actually gave your commission the biggest challenge probably ever. Hey, we like the concept. Tell us what it means. Good luck. And anyone, welcome to reframe that history as they want, but you can, as we have done, go back through time and see that's literally the conversation you're going to see resurface, that we've given this commission the challenge to define itself, and look what you've done. I just think I heard we're going to put this on the consent calendar. That, to me, is the ultimate end of conversation, mic drop. Can't wait to see what this commission continues to do. Thank you for investing. Thank you for connecting the ambassador program. That is absolutely what I was going to point out, is creating more space. I would say, timeout. Wouldn't it be ironic if my mic was off this whole time and you were just trying to tell me and I can't hear you? But nonetheless, thank you for your work, because I could go on and on to some point, but just want to kind of recognize you've done what very few cities have had the courage to do, stand by your principles. And again, I believe this is going on the consent calendar, and if it isn't now, because I pointed that out, more power to us, but just want to say thank you for your work and thank you for the legacy that you're creating.
So this is all recommendations, though. We have to remember that nothing can happen unless council or staff or whatever. There's these little boxes in there, who's going to lead it, has it started, and so forth. So I just want to, again, remind people that these are recommendations. So if there are portions of it that they would like to talk about later, we can, because this is not carved in stone, it's not concrete, it's just all recommendations. And because there are several areas where I would like to dig a little deeper before we do anything. So I just want to just make sure that everyone realizes that everything that you see on here is not going to happen, especially it's not going to happen overnight. It takes a long time in city government, and did you have something to say?
After you were done, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So anyways, it just takes a long, long time. And then when it comes to term limits, look at, we've been working on, Brian and I have been working on town center for 15 years or more, and do we have it yet? We're still working on it. It just takes a long time, and it just, just reminding people that, you know, having people with history. Oh, no, because we're on the planning commission together.
No, I was looking at Rick. I was kidding.
We all have been working on it, but Brian and I worked on it for the planning commission and then on the council. So that's all I wanted to have to say. So city manager, you had something?
I did. I just wanted to mention that we, based on the comments that I've heard tonight about digging a little bit deeper on certain topics, rather than the consent agenda, we'll have this on your agenda as a presentation and discussion so we can have a little bit more. We'll gather your comments over the next week or so. Please send those to me, and I'll, we'll see what we can do to incorporate, and then we'll have a discussion on those additions or changes at the 20th meeting. I don't want to put it on consent when it seems like there's still a desire of council to look into a few other pieces.
So I don't understand that we're supposed to send you comments and you incorporate it. Don't we have to do that publicly in a meeting?
You do, and that's why you deliberate on those comments during the presentation and discussion.
But it sounds like we should have another meeting. It's just weird. We've never really sent in, it's just a different way of not communicating as well as we should if we just send in our comments. I think that it always should be talked about in public and not in an email.
Sure, and we can talk about it in public, too. That's why we'll have it for presentation and discussion at the meeting.
And then will we vote on it at that time, or do we vote on it on another day?
Depends on what council thinks after your discussion. I think we can.
Well, Mayor Prinam Wall, and then.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think what city manager is saying is if we have additional feedback, and others, based on what we've just heard, if we have additional feedback to get that in and we'll incorporate it into the next draft presented to the council so that we can have a discussion on it. But the idea is, I mean, in other words, you're already planning on making some adjustments based on our comments tonight, right? So if we have additional thoughts or ideas in the next few days, get them in so that they can incorporate that, and then we'll have a discussion on it.
By next Thursday? Is what you're saying?
No, no.
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
But I didn't hear that many changes. That's what I'm wondering. What are all these changes that I'm?
Well, that's what we're going to talk about.
But, I mean, we're here right now. I mean, do we have a summary of changes that are already going to be put in there?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I suggested three, so I'm hoping that those get incorporated in somehow.
Why would we incorporate those now when we haven't even voted on those?
I mean, that could be an addendum. That's what I don't understand what we're, I get really confused on how we've changed kind of the flow of how government works. I just have a thing, and it's just going to go in there because the thing about the indigenous thing, I didn't really agree with what you had to say, but now I understand you're going to put it in there, and now we're going to vote on it. And so that's usually not how it goes. We usually vote like now on it, and then, because otherwise, we're telling Carolyn to work twice on it. You know, it's just kind of informally done. So you have three comments, and was there a lot more? I guess I was just kind of surprised this is how we're doing it.
So from my perspective, we would take the feedback from individual council members, if there is any, and then we would present that to you for discussion, not that you need to vote on it, or you can vote on it with changes that you make at the next meeting, or not the next meeting, on the 20th. So it's not informal. We'll be in a formal setting here in this room to debate any particular changes that a council member might like to see, and it would take a majority to adopt it.
Councilmember Woodard, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I would, I'm just going to say, if there's not substantive change from tonight till the next night, I'm not sure why we can't handle it right now to councilmember Sonmore's point. To that, I don't recall what your three requests were that you said you just gave, and that's just, maybe I disassociated, but nonetheless, here we find ourselves. So I would say, if we can handle it now, let's handle it now. That being the point. Why, I teased, saying if I point out we're going to put this on the consent calendar, we'll take it off, but here we are again. Let's handle it tonight, because I didn't hear anything, no one said take it out completely. Let me use as an example. I am a little surprised that I can't recall, which is kind of the point, where was I when I used a gender-neutral bathroom? And I think it was actually downtown Seattle, where basically each stall is a private experience, and then you step out and it's a communal opportunity to wash your hands, if you will. Now, to me, it was indoors, but I said to myself, what does this actually look like? It looks like a very high-class set of porta-potties that I just saw when I was volunteering at the marathon and the Snohomish Run. Literally, the difference is they were indoors, but the point of it is, is that each box, if you will, was a private experience. So I would say, yes, a gender-neutral bathroom makes sense, but not if you're telling me I'm going to take down every bathroom right now because it has to be private. Like, that, to me, is like, yeah, that's splitting hairs. But at the concept level, we agree gender-neutral bathrooms are something we could consider, when at the end of it all, none of this is anything we're bound to. So again, this is the DEICs. You challenged us to define ourselves. We've done that. So I'm not quite, again, sure, if not changing anything substantive, why we would wait and not handle it right now.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Not on that note, but on our presentation we just received today, it is 30 pages. Are we voting on the strategic plan clean, 11.06.25 of 187 pages? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So we've gone through 30 pages of 187 pages. So rather than belabor all that tonight, we can talk about it on the discussion on 20th to make sure everybody goes beyond the 30 pages and look at 11.06.25 so we can get a better understanding of everything. You might have some other questions, and we can raise those on the 20th and have further discussion at that time. But right now, see, 187 minus 30, so we still have 157 pages to go through.
Some of the pages.
All right. So that's why I think the 20th would be a great time for discussion, and I'd recommend that council to make sure you're looking at the 187 pages, also the red line of 191 pages, and so we can get a little better perspective of this and have a greater discussion on the 20th. So that's, thank you for answering the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Page, and then Woodard.
Well, all I was going to say is, in response to that, is that, you know, I think that we got this information pretty timely, and I think that we had opportunity, you know, before we came here, you know, to read the 180-plus pages, you know, so that we could have some understanding of the slides that we were going to get. Now, I'm not saying that not to go back and look at it, but, you know, I think our responsibility here as council members that when this information comes out, just like any other information that comes out, I've learned in the short period of time that I've been here, that for every 10 to 15 to 20 slides that get put up on the screen, there's anywhere from 50 to 100-plus pages, you know, for background information that we have to prepare ourselves for so that when we sit down here and get the presentation, we know what the background history is. And if that hasn't been done, then you're right, we do have to go back and be ready to come back, but the information has been there, you know, in our system when the agenda was put together. So let's not forget that, you know. This isn't new to me. I read it, you know, and so, I don't know, I just, and yeah, there's a lot of information here, and we've also have talked about some changes. There's some, obviously, some disagreement on, you know, on certain things. That's why I asked a question about the term limits. How did that come up, you know, and so that that could be spoken to? And I agree with councilmember Woodard about, you know, the bathrooms, you know. I think of, I'm flying down to Texas and for Thanksgiving, and I'm going to be in a gender-neutral bathroom at some point because it's a long ride, and I don't think anybody on the plane is going to complain about that, you know, in reality. So, you know, but, you know, it's up for question, so we need to make sure that every one of these things that are on here is something that we're prepared to vote for, and if we're not prepared to vote for everything as a single unit, then we need to let, you know, some bodies know before we get back here so that we're prepared to discuss those things that maybe we all have disagreement upon. And if we don't look at it, then we're not going to know if we can vote on it when the time come to vote because we won't be prepared to vote on it, in my opinion.
Then, councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I really just had a quick point of clarification, I think is the way you phrase this, to our deputy city manager. Was tonight's report not basically an executive summary? I mean, I appreciate the, read 187 pages, but at the same time, just from our accessibility level, if you will, for our residents listening in, can they trust that on some levels, what was summarized were the high-level, you can deep dive, but again, at the level of concept and principle, the concepts will remain, but again, you might differ at how you express it, if you will. That said, I appreciate that reminder of the, make sure you read the whole report, and I would use that as a segue to say, thank you all for your contribution to the fiscal sustainability plan report, 104 pages, which I hope we equally take as much time and rigor and go through that when its turn is up, because we are responsible for a lot of heavy reading every time. And And as former deputy, excuse me, former Mayor Pro Tim McArdle would say, every decision is an important one. And so we should be preparing and reading everything, no matter what. So appreciate the reminder, but also gave me a chance to thank you all for your contribution to the fiscal sustainability plan report. But again, answer my question. Is this a high-level executive report?
Yes. Last session, we talked about all of the recommendations in the report and this time we gave a high-level overview of the changes that we made since then.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And if anyone brings, sends in any recommendation, changes, whatever, it will be incorporated in the next presentation.
Yeah, similarly to tonight, we'll do red line version so that those, those points can be highlighted and debated.
All right. So can I just, so just to understand, so if we haven't made a comment in here, we can still make comments and send them to you because don't we usually have to put our comments all together on the floor out in the open and not send individual emails? Because that's not very transparent. That's why I wanted a summary of what the changes were because we just don't, because we've been doing that a lot. I guess emails go and then things get changed and then I don't know about what the changes are because, or we're asked a question in an email, how do you feel about this? And it's like, aren't we supposed to be asked that on the dais, not in an email? So that's what I'm kind of confused at because like Rick pointed it out, it's a lot of pages and you said you're adding three and I'm going through here. Well, then where are those going to go in the report? Because we just looked at a presentation and so that's where I'm getting kind of confused. So besides the comments we have here, we still have time to make additional comments off the dais and just send them to the city manager.
You, you do and then they come back in this public forum for you to discuss. It's not, the changes aren't made and the plan's adopted. It still comes back to the full council for consideration and adoption.
I still think we should do it on the dais. I don't think we should be sending you individual emails to discuss things that we're supposed to discuss in meetings.
We'll be discussing it next, on the, on the 20th. Okay, I don't, oh, Councilmember Woodard.
Just to humor me, maybe that's why I don't remember this. To Councilmember Sonmore's point, what are the three? You've, you said it, but did you say it tonight? Are you saying you sent that in an email? And I guess, I don't want to address, I don't want to break protocol. Like all of a sudden, we're really walking close to fine lines. I thought, I thought we always addressed it to public, not each other. But I am confused as well. What, what are those three changes that I'm going to hear differently? Not the, did you read the 187 pages? I'm, I'm being told there's three changes to make it at least 188 pages, if you will. So what's on page 188 that are those three pages, that those three changes are at least, were they spoken tonight? Because if they're in that email, I, you know, again, I'm, I'm trying to empathize but also express my own concern about, what are we talking about with Councilmember Sonmore said? Is this in an email or was this tonight in public? The three changes specifically.
Mayor Pro Tim, would you like to answer that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The three areas that I'd like some fine tuning on the recommendation, to be clear. I'm not looking to add new recommendations. I'm not adding, looking to add, make substantial changes. But the three areas that I'd like us to reword would be the term limits, gender-neutral bathrooms, and the, I guess, the land acknowledgement sections. And I think they're all important and there's ways to address them. Each of those areas that if, with some tweaking of the language, I don't want to, you know, I don't, I don't know that we want to be doing that as a body right here, right now, I guess. I'm, I'm trusting Carolyn and the group, work group that's, that's organizing the language to take our comments and that was, those are just mine. I know there were other comments and questions and clarifications that you were taking notes on, to be able to incorporate those ideas, fine-tune the language, do the word smithing for us, bring that back to us for consideration and review at our next meeting, on the, our next formal meeting, I guess, on the 20th. So, and as, as has been pointed out, those, any, any changes that any of us offer, ideas that we have that want to be addressed will be in the, both the clean version and the, the red line version so that we'll be able to, it will be clear to everyone what tweaks were made to address the comments and concerns that have been shared tonight. I hope that helps answer.
So that's what I was trying to understand when you were asking about the neutral general restrooms. We've already taken a step to do that in City Hall, which is wonderful. And we've already taken the steps when we're looking at remodeling or new construction to address it then. So I didn't understand what your question was to tweak it because I thought it looked fine the way it was. But you had just mentioned that we can't like afford certain things now, so I didn't know. That's, I'm not sure what you were asking.
Well, to remodel bathrooms are going to be a lot of money and to make it, to make it really like, like the bathrooms that I think that Councilmember Woodard was talking about, that is a stall within it and it's like a, it's like its own room. It goes, the borders, what the side things go all the way to the floor and all the way to the ceilings and the doors. You know, I, I think you're talking about the, the brand-new ones over in Seattle in, in the old sanctuary.
Yes, I believe so. Yes.
And that, that is the epitome of the best, the gender-neutral bathrooms out there. Not every, not every, every one in Seattle is like that. And I don't know if any, can I just, if you've ever experienced going to a gender-neutral bathroom and the person next to you is of not, not your gender and, and there's, and, and the stalls don't go all the way to the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add a clarification that when we say that there should be a gender-neutral bathroom in all buildings, it doesn't mean that all the bathrooms have to be gender-neutral, right? So at operations, we have a bathroom that's for the public. It's not the women's locker room or the men's locker room that can, that can serve as the gender-neutral bathroom. It's more complicated in places like the recreation center. But this proposal doesn't mean we can't have separated sex bathrooms, but it does have a goal of trying to have a place for people who would like their own privacy.
One or two stalls for family members of any kind and so forth.
That's the way I, I just thought, because I thought, oh my gosh, how many bathrooms do we have? 20 and we're going to change them all. So I was trying to do all the math, but, but then I read how it was written. And it says, provide general neutral restrooms in all city buildings as remodels are planned. This one's already been remodeled and they've already taken action.
And we have one gender-neutral one right there.
Right. And then, and then it says, new buildings are designed and funding is available. I thought it was worded perfectly. And so that's why I didn't understand the change. And that's, Brian, why I was asking you, what change? What's wrong with it?
Mayor, and I agree with that. You know, that's, that's exactly what I was going to say. You know, the, the recommendation is, in my mind, is, is written very well and the action plan is written equally well. Some changes have been made. Some require minor changes to signage. Others require capital improvements and more discussions. You know, so I don't see where it needs to be tweaked at all because it's not asking for an overhaul. It's asking for consideration as things are planned and, and, and finance is available when those plans are made.
So could it not be that Mayor Pro Tim asks for a tweak and they look at it going, there's no tweaking needed?
But I didn't want to be rude and, and understand what you were asking because I, you went quickly and I didn't grasp it all the way and I just heard something about not having it. And that's why I was making sure that you were heard, but I didn't under, it looked good to me.
Okay, I don't see any other hands going up. All right. So was that the end of the report?
Yes.
And we've asked all our questions? Okay. Pardon?
So if we're going to talk about, if one of the other items to tweak the language is about term limits, because, because, you know, Councilmember, well, you pretty much said, I'm against it, you know. So that's not a tweak, that's an elimination. Right?
But he's only one.
I understand. I'm just asking for a clarification from him because, because if that's the case, then, you know, then that's obviously an item one that can't go, if that's there, it can't go to a consent agenda because I don't necessarily agree with that. And so there's something that's going to, would have, that item would have to come to a vote, right? So that couldn't go to a consent agenda as long as if one individual at least don't agree with it at all. You know, you're not looking for a tweak. You want it not to happen. I realize that's one, but one represents the seven.
But that also says that it's a recommendation and it has, and the only way you can change it is the council. I think it says that on there.
Yes, it does.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. In the spirit of diversity, equity and inclusion, let me show you where I'm at. I actually agree with Councilmember, excuse me, with, too many titles, with Mayor Pro Tim. I don't think that the way it's written, that it's got the right intent. I, I would want to hear more around what this idea of term limits are, especially when, again, we're giving examples where we create opportunities. So to me, I would say, let's use the fiscal sustainability task force again as an example. They were in essence implicated in my earlier comment. But there, I would say, well, you'd want to make sure we're reaching out and giving new folks opportunities. They're not necessarily our commissions, which is what I thought the term limit conversations were about. The way we're talking, I'm like, are y'all talking about council members? What are we talking about here? Like, not that deep. But making sure we're finding people opportunities to stay engaged. So if we are going to say term limits, I want to know, well, how do we keep whoever has cycled out involved? And let me use, just in my other part of my world, I serve on a lot of boards. The very effective ones do have a, at the end of six years, you must cycle off for a year. So is that person given, for lack of a better word, right back to their seat? So that really what you're doing is you're giving someone a year experience? I, you know, I think some of our conversations are too long for a year to be effective, but to me, again, that's splitting hairs. But if, again, this is where I pull it to another side and ask, is this not the DEIC's a challenge-accepted product? Meaning that if we were to say, take that out, we effectively just said, no DEI, you don't get to tell us that's what you want. Because again, none of this is binding. This is them telling us what they've heard through their process that, that the community wants, not with the, not even what the DEI wants, right, commission-wise? So I don't think that's too much, but at the same time, you know, I, I do want to say, yeah, I can, I can take things off the consent calendar. You can do this presentation again. Everybody better read that 187 if we're doing that because I'm going to start pulling off pages, you know. Nonetheless, let's make sure that we're doing it for the right reasons, being the point. Because again, it was an executive review. So if we're at principle level, not going to change anything, I don't get it. So, you know, I don't want to eliminate term reviews. I want to know more about it. I don't have to take it off because I think it's just not phrased right, being my, my takeaway there.
That's the member Sonmore.
And, and this is where an email wouldn't have spawneded this conversation. In that respect, I agree with Councilman on, on his feedback on that because to me, I heard some background on why that was put in there in the first place. And, sorry, I just saw some flashing lights. I disagree with it because anybody can run for city council every two years and you can put your name in there and just because you have a term limit doesn't mean that your other people you think should run will run because a lot of people at the last moment won't. Volunteers, we had that big conversation, especially with the arts commission. You, you remove them all and you will not be able to put an art show on the next year. I've worked with the arts. I've worked with all the project planning on it. I know what goes into it. You have to have people that are on it and these are volunteers that you're telling, oop, you got to get off now because other people may want it, they may not want it. Who knows? We might not have it again. We've created new opportunity for volunteers with the, or looking at a police board. We created new opportunities with the DEI board. And I had heard that somebody was amiss on who was currently on the council and they had some bad things to say and that's why they wanted to put it on the survey. And I was not really happy about how that went about because council members are not supposed to make each other look bad in the public and that was one of the rules that we had had. So yes, if you wanted feedback on it, I would agree with that. And the thing that you said about the tribes, I wasn't sure on what you wanted on that. And so that's why I wanted some conversations because I didn't know what Carolyn had picked up and what I had picked up, but that's my feedback on that. You know, it's fine that you put that on a survey. It's fine that it's there. But running for council is open to everybody. Volunteers are open to everybody. But like you had said before, sometimes we don't get any volunteers before to even get appointed and we have to kind of beg people to come. So I wasn't sure what is the disconnect and what is the dislike that people are trying to change right now.
Well, I don't know if we'll get an answer to that.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. So we'll see you on November 20. Okay. Take a five minute, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll be back by 9:50? Five?
Five, sorry, eight.
Oh, excuse me, 8:50.
8:54, looks like.
8:54. We're back in session. Let's see, next on the agenda is the review and vote on the allocation of funds for Transit Connection Corridor Project with our Recreation and Parks Director, Jeff Betts. Are you there? You are.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Town and Council. Hopefully everybody can hear me okay.
We can.
Good news. So as mentioned, I am Jeff Betts, Recreation and Parks Director for the city. Tonight, we're reviewing and voting on allocation of funds for the Transit Connection Corridor Project. So the most relevant legislative history to this item was on August 1st, 2024. The council reviewed and voted on a bid award for Veterans Memorial Park Trails. This contract was awarded to Granite Construction. The Veterans Memorial Park Trails project is Phase 1 of a two-phase project to improve connectivity to light rail. Phase 2 will move forward when the bid is advertised, here pretty soon, actually in the next couple of weeks, for the pedestrian plaza that's adjacent to light rail. So this project, it converts existing dirt paths into paved illuminated pathways, installed a new pedestrian bridge crossing the Stormwater Channel and also completes required frontage improvements along 58th Avenue West. So these pathways will provide access to 60th Avenue West, Civic Campus, 58th Avenue West and the Transit Center. So funding for this project was provided by Sound Transit, the Petruson Regional Council, the Federal Highway Administration and also the City for Project Administration. The contractor began construction in early 2025. Most elements have progressed, but there have been some occasional... Most elements have progressed, but there have been some occasional issues that have triggered some change orders. So the additional grant funding that needs to be allocated for these change orders would cover the shoring work near abutments of the bridge. So there wasn't specific shoring outlined in the plan set in the design itself that was a requirement for the contractor to perform that work. So we had to provide them with that information, which caused a little bit of delay and thus change order. Additionally, there were stormwater pipe modifications, specifically an outfall that was near a bridge abutment that was not logged into any of our GIS systems. So when the contractor started digging, they found a stormwater pipe. That was actually a pretty important piece that we had to divert some of the water into a different direction and do some work around that pipe. And there were actually a couple of different stormwater pieces that we discovered doing this project that were, some were old and abandoned, some that weren't. But none of them were on our plans. So in addition, there were some wall heights that had to be adjusted due to some design issues. And some of these design issues are related to grade changes within the park and the survey data that comes back. So that, as you know, Vets, Veterans Memorial Park is, does have various grades throughout the park, and so that has been tough to capture with just a standard survey at times, every little kind of indentation of the ground. So there was some changes here and there to those pieces, including, like I mentioned, the wall heights of some of the combination walls that we use that have rocks in them that are in cages, is kind of what they look like. Also, there were additional tree removals that required multiple mobilizations. Staff were trying to save as many trees as we can that were borderline along the trail. And so there were a couple of extra, as I mentioned, mobilizations due to the proximity of the trail and also the shoulder of the trail. And so some of those were able to save and some we were not. But we did create some additional snags where those trees, actually the base of the tree were saved, but the top was cut for wildlife habitat. So in addition, there was a street overlay and sidewalk adjustments that needed to be made. As we dug into 58th, we realized that it was not built to standard construction specifications. So there was additional gravel that had to be added to actually be able to do an overlay. It was very, very thin. I'm not sure when the road was built, but it was definitely not up to current specs. So that took additional funding sources. And then in addition, there's some sidewalk adjustments that we had to make to make sure that we were town center, in alignment with town center design standards. So, and then the last change order piece came into play with additional material due to top course with grade changes, and then also some additional chorus balls with those same grade changes, similar to some of the issues with survey data that I mentioned before. So that original cost was $2,647,493 approximately. And that had an additional 10% contingency of $264,749. So this recommendation from staff is to add an additional amount, not to exceed $283,758, to, which would be required to finish the project and pay the contractor for all the relevant change orders. The additional funds are not coming from the general fund or our CIP even, but these are grant funds from the sources mentioned above. So the amounts previously mentioned are what council authorized originally as part of the contract, that 2.647 million and then the additional 10% contingency. And so this is for an additional amount of $283,758. So that project completion for Vets Trails right now is scheduled for mid-December, and that will include lighting, handrails, and some of the mitigation plantings that need to occur. And the staff recommendation is that the council vote to authorize the city manager to sign those change orders to the construction agreement with Granite Construction. And that is the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. I think Councilmember Sonmore does.
I do. So wasn't planning, side rails, sidewalk change, wasn't that all looked at before they started this project? How come all these things come up, came up? Who was supposed to be looking at all of it?
So some of them, if you're asking me, who is to blame for the changes, right?
No, I'm just, I mean, I'm asking the sidewalks different, I mean, plants. I thought we already paid for that, and all of a sudden now we've got plants and rails that weren't paid for?
No. So those are the items that have not been completed yet. I was just outlining at the end of my little presentation there, the items that the contractor still needs to complete to finish the project, those are not included in the change orders that I mentioned earlier. Those are just the scope items needed to complete the project. So they, they're gonna come back out, next week, actually, they start coming back out to finish some of the long-range ordered items. So the lighting on the lamps themselves is backordered everywhere across country, apparently. So those just came in. So they're coming out to install the lighting, and then the handrails are gonna be installed as well, because those were also long lead items. And then the mitigation items only can be planted during the wet time of the year, so they're coming out due to that at the same time. But none of, those are all original planned.
So you probably know the question I asked, too. It says additional tree removal, and we had this conversation, there would not be any more additional tree removal. They made sure that all of the trees that need to be taken down were taken down. How much of the overrun has this project cost when we first put it out to bid?
For the trees, you're talking about the whole project?
The whole project.
So the, the construction portion of the project, because we have design and construction, so the construction portion I mentioned was $2,647,493. And that had an additional $264,000 in contingency that was allocated. So it's an additional $283,000 is what we're looking at as a max amount to complete the project. So that's maybe an additional 10% off, off the top of my head. I haven't done the math to know what that is.
And since this is the CIP of fun, could it also, in the future, go, could have gone to other capital improvement projects instead of this one?
No. No, these are grant-specific funds only. These grants were applied for this project and the plaza combined, so Phase One and Phase Two grants that are gonna pay for just those projects.
So we already knew this budget was in here on top of the contingency? So we had to kind of spend it anyhow? It just?
We're going, yeah, exactly. We're going to have to with the plaza. So we, we had a little over $6 million to do both projects, right? To include everything with design and construction for both Phase One Veterans Memorial Park Trails and Phase Two, the pedestrian plaza that we're looking to go to bid here pretty soon. So that total amount is to, all those were grants. The city did not have a single, you know, dollar vested budgeted in that besides staff time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so. Mayor Protem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to sign change orders not to exceed an additional $283,758 with Granite Construction for the Transit Connection Corridor Project.
Second?
This has been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard?
Oh, too late. That's okay, I'll let it go.
Oh, I didn't see.
I know, Jeff is still there. Oh, Jeff, sorry. Before you run out there, I didn't want to stop this process, because this is kind of a next phase two question. So just so everybody's level set, Phase Two is technically across the street, if you will, the south end or the south side of 236th. So basically, if you use the farthest end, the southern end of the platform to come down for light rail, you'd be talking about that plaza that we've been talking about, correct? The way it looks right now, it's a slope is a different way to say that. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Perfect. So, and again, nothing to do with what we just voted on, but about that portion of the project. I'd love to know whether or not we can embed a, and maybe it is, have whoever the contractor is, so in that bid, if we could say we want it to be able to be livestreamed. I've just seen a couple of different capital projects where, I don't know if that was built into the contract, but they had a livestream, which literally you were able to watch it happen, that if that's not adding to the price, if you will, but is an expectation, I'd love to see how that can be embedded in there, and that's just my way of saying to then have a conversation about how to use that as an educational opportunity. And I would just say personally, you know, I still can't get my head around how that slope's gonna turn into this beautiful plaza where people are going to, on level-set ground, you know, level ground have a space. I mean, it's like to not document that and share that with the schools, share that with whoever, this seems like a missed opportunity. But again, beginning with that, it's gonna be a construction site, so blocked off, so can we get a livestream so we can see what's happening in there? No more, you know, behind the curtain, if you will.
We'll see what we can do.
All right. Thank you. So next is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, just a couple of things to mention tonight. First, just to tag on to Jeff's presentation, the contractor will be out there on Monday to start installing those items, the railing and the lights and everything else. It'll take through mid-December, but they're gonna start on Monday, so you'll see work out there next week. Also, very proud of our Public Works Cruise. During the storms the last couple of days, we have not had any major flooding issues that have come to my attention at all, and I know several of our neighbors have had issues. So there was a lot of water that came down, but we're keeping the leaves out of the storm drains, along with help from, you know, neighboring property owners who take it upon themselves to clean those out. But so far, we've done very well. I'm hoping we can keep that up through the rest of the winter. But we've gotten a lot of the leaves taken care of. And lastly, something that we have been looking at for quite a while, we have a first draft of an artificial intelligence, an AI policy, that we're gonna work with, and we will share that with you after we've gone through and refined all the language completely, but got off the ground and have a good first start on an AI policy for the city. So with that, that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the city manager? I don't see any. So we'll go on to the council liaison reports. And why don't we, are you ready? We can start with you, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. October 21st, Tuesday, attended the Arts Advisory Commission. Nothing to report yet from that group. They're still analyzing the art show and their work plan that'll be coming up. Then on November 5th, had a one-on-one with the city manager. And today, the 6th, I met with our city manager evaluate, valuation person that's helping. And I believe that is it. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore?
I attended the Financial Sustainability Task Force last week.
Thank you. Councilmember Page?
Last month, I attended, at the end of the month, the Chamber of Commerce monthly gathering over at the Getaway, and had an opportunity to, and it was there because of the upcoming plans for the, with the Getaway to have the big fundraiser, three-day fundraiser for the Domestic Violence Service Center. And, sorry about that. And also, I had my meeting with the city manager, as well as today, I had opportunity to meet with the person who is Debbie, who is putting us all together for the city manager's evaluation. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, too many screens. So Wednesday, the 22nd, I did attend online the Water and Sewer Open House. Just congratulations again on making it an accessible government and collaborating across the region. I just love that concept, you know, upstream to downstream is very accessible language. And again, just thank you all for the presentation. Thursday, the next day, the 23rd, I attended the Clothes for Kids fundraiser breakfast. Folks just do a wonderful job of making resources available to our students. And so I'll leave that there. Later that evening, we did have a finance meeting, and I will just say, you know, appreciate the conversations there. And then on the 28th, I had my, I had a conversation with the branding consultants. So I had that, and then followed that up later that afternoon with the chamber meeting, which, you know, they're just doing a wonderful job, and I really like that they're moving around the city. I believe the next one is, I'm probably gonna get it wrong, but I'm gonna say, is that Skog? And so just saying, you know, appreciate that work that they're doing. Because we are a walkable city, at least for where I was in relationship to the chamber and that branding meeting, I was able to walk. In doing so, I had to pass City Hall on the way home, at which point I looked up and saw the beautiful screen behind you all and said to myself, what's going on? And it was a traffic calming conversation, or a public forum, so just want to give credit there to our traffic engineer team, putting that on. It was for 60th Street on the other side of I-5, if you will, just the problems that they have there. You know, it was a small group of dedicated residents trying to figure out how to calm the traffic on their side, so just wanted to let them know. You had no idea that that's who I was, but know that your council cares about what's going on there, and I just happened to be walking by. But just like we're trying to make the city center walkable, we want to absolutely make sure we mirror that on every parts of the Mount Lake Terrace. I'll revisit the idea of a walkable city, but to say that on the 29th, I was invited to have a conversation on a podcast with Cocoon House and just talk about our lovely city and just the promise that it represents. And then, as I said, I'd returned to the walkable city part, just wanted to acknowledge, and this is one of those about communication, so I will just keep it short and say, thank you for acknowledging it again today, that we were given a best-in-governance, Polk Code 2025 Best in Governance Award as a top performer on mobility, and specifically the voice of the people. So when I think about, you know, tying that back to, say, the term limits, I would also point out that, hey, we give lots of ways to give input, and it's just wonderful to see it recognized, which is a way to equally say thank you to our city manager for the leadership. You know, this is the only recognition that we have been given, and that's not to mention his own personal recognition he's getting amongst his peers in the state, but just kind of recognizing, you know, that we really are an accessible and always creative city in terms of trying to become more accessible, and I appreciate that. That said, thank you all for your meetings with the other consultant, if you will, on the city manager review. I have mine coming up tomorrow, otherwise I reported it today. So that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, so let's see, going back to October 22nd, had the Snoomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee meeting, where we had briefings from workforce Snohomish, from Department of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Progress and the update, update on the progress we're making on the hazard mitigation. And then a briefing from the Snoomish County Transportation Coalition. On the following day, the 23rd, had the Puget Sound Regional Council Operations Committee meeting, followed by the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board meeting. At the executive board meeting, we had discussion items, regional comprehensive climate action plan, the housing monitoring report, regional centers update, and regional transportation plan, draft plan development. Then update, and regional transportation plan, draft plan development. Then joined Councilmember Woodard with the Finance Committee, and then we had our work session on the, sorry, last Tuesday. Had our, had our regular monthly Snoomish County, South Snoomish County Cities Presidents and Mayors Protem meeting, where we talked about our regional challenges and issues that we're all facing, shared ideas as to how we're addressing those things, those issues that we're facing here at the local level. Followed by Wednesday, had the Snoomish County Tomorrow Executive Committee meeting. And then earlier today, the mayor and I met with the city manager for our, our regular meeting. And I think that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So for my report on October 22nd, I attended the Water Sewer Come Plan, public forum here at the city chambers. And again, it was, it was almost a full house. It was quite a few people here to talk about water and sewer. So that was great. On the 24th, I had, I had, city manager and I had a meeting with the CEO of Economic Alliance of Snoomish County, Ray Siffenson, and a staff member. And on the 28th and the 29th, I attended the Cascadia Conference, Cascadia Inter, Inter, something?
Regional.
Regional Conference. And the subject this year was on AI. It's very, very interesting. And I left a brochure there for the city. And the whole concept with Cascadia is they're trying to get a light rail, I mean, a high-speed rail system from Portland, Oregon to Vancouver, B.C. And, and it would take, from Portland, Oregon to Vancouver, B.C., it will take two hours. So it'll be an hour to Seattle. And, and they're in the planning. And oh my gosh, that, that is actually probably going to happen after I'm gone. It won't happen in my lifetime. And the speakers there, our governor, the mayor of Portland, a representative from Vancouver, B.C., Christine Gregoire is the chair of that. Senator Marco Leas was in attendance. I mean, it was a who's who of people in attendance. So that was a big learning experience. On the 3rd of November, I attended, I attended a one-on-one meeting with the branding people and gave them some of the ideas that I had. And they're very good at listening, taking notes. On the 5th, I attended the South Snoomish County Mayor's luncheon. And I really just have to say that, just like the, the Mayor Protem and Chair, we, we really have a camaraderie that is just amazing. And we, we listen to each other, we, we air our problems, and then we, we get feedback from what they do with their city and so forth. It's really, really something that I hope we can continue. And, and earlier today, I attended the Dawson Place luncheon with quite a few elected officials over there. And that is a, is a group that helps sexually, sexual assault victims who are children, children. And then I was glad to see that our police department is one of, one of the sponsors and attended. And I, and I've been attending that for quite a few years now. And then that, that is the end of my report. But I just also want to mention that this Saturday at 2 o'clock at our library, Randy Gravel is going to be talking about his book, Four Square Miles, A History of Mount Lake Terrace. So hopefully we can have some people attend that because he does, it's really, you can read the book or you can hear him talk about it. And that is the end of my report. Next is new business. Does anyone have any new business? You do. Okay. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to address the council in that coming up will be soon the AWC City Action Days in Olympia. And with something we used to do in the past for our council in times of budget concerns, is just sending one or two representatives down instead of everybody going down. Plus, this year, it's going to be a short thing because it's a election year, and it's going to be a shorter time, I think, to talk to our legislators. So I'd recommend someone like, you know, the mayor, Mayor Protem go or mayor and someone else go, something like that. Also, then in the summer, the AWC, it would be good if you need more education and you'd like to work on your municipal leadership credits and then or work on your advanced municipal credits, because I know there's probably two or three council members that don't have the advanced one yet. But if you have that already, and then again, I would like just one, two, three, or four people go instead of everybody, because it's expensive. So, and then you could get any information that's really important and bring it back to us and share. That'd be great. So it's just a recommendation, if we want to try to save money like we did that about eight years ago, and little things like that. Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Ryan, that's an excellent thing. We did that throughout the whole city. I know at one of conference that the city had, they sent four people. And usually they send one every like three or four years. And so the whole city should be looking at cutting costs, going to conferences and things like that, because we need to start doing it now and we haven't been.
Anyone else? Well, we can probably discuss that, because they have CML credits also on City Action Days, too. And I learned something at, at the mayor's conference that AWC put on that's in some cities, you, in some cities, in council cities, that you needed to have a CML to become mayor or Mayor Protem. It was, I've never heard of that before, but apparently a few cities do that. A CML? Yeah, uh-huh. Yeah, that's what they were doing. So I've never heard that before. On your desk area, there is the Elected Officials Essentials, and it's for newly elected officials to go. But it's also a good review if you haven't been for a long time. And I know that mine was a while back, and, but I think I went in between, but that's still a long time ago. And things have changed. So, yes. But if you, and ours is in Bothell, that's the closest one. So it's not like you need to pay for a hotel room or anything. Just go to Bothell for the day and then, and learn about, and you can do it online, too, but I think that you get a lot more in person. So just a suggestion, but this is here, and it's in Bothell, and it's on the, oh, Saturday, December 6th, if you guys want to go. And talk to our city manager and Jennifer if you do. And that is the end of my report. Anyone else? I don't see anyone else, so we're going to adjourn. Thank you very much.